First person?
Yeah, she never sat there. Hello, my name is Jonathan Chafee. I'm actually the Coalition Coordinator for Partners for Prevention. I work at the Allegheny Council for Alcoholism and Substance Abuse. I live in Ollyam in New York, though. I'm here for the Coalition. The one thing I would say for us, where we live, we always talk about wanting to have control. We don't want the state to just widespread passing law that's gonna have an effect on all of us. And this is our one chance to have that, that control. The one thing I would say is that, you know, adult marijuana use is legal. Opting out for the Village of Wellsville does not mean not being able to, at some point, partake in maybe the income that comes from retail marijuana use. The idea, though, is that right now, there's been four board meetings of the Office of Cannabis Management. Not one of them, have they talked about how licensing in retail is gonna take place? That's gonna affect our municipalities and where we live. So, my thought is, why not wait? Wait for the law, wait for all the rules to come through, and then make a decision if it's right for the village. And that's really all I have to say.
Again, I'd like to thank everyone for allowing me to speak tonight. I'm William Pennman. I'm the Executive Director of the Allegheny Council on Alcohol and Substance Abuse. I'm primarily here because, very similar to what John has talked about, that the Office of Cannabis Management is going to issue licenses for consumption and dispensary, but they have no regulations right now. The only thing they have on their website is some distance from schools and some other areas, but there's nothing on there that talks about how or where, duration of time, it can be opened, and locations. One of the things that it does say on the website is that it talks about that a town or municipality may establish regulations for the operations, but it cannot be unreasonably impractical as determined by the Cannabis Control Board. So, they still have the ability right now to, if you pass a local ordinance or something, and it is found to be impractical for any dispensary or consumption site, they can, they can over, overrule it. So, again, the idea of opting out now and let them get into place what the regulations are and what they, how they're going to function would bring, you can opt back in. I, I know that, I didn't make enough copies, but I have some information for the board. This is from a, a website called SAM, it's Smart Approaches to Marijuana. It has a lot of information on there about all kinds of things in reference to the addiction levels that marijuana has. One of the things that it says on here was, the THC level of current marijuana is much higher than what it was thirty, forty years ago. Training for officers that are DREs, which are Drug Recognition Experts, but not every police agency has one on their staff. And they are, it's very costly for a municipality to get somebody trained. Other thing, one other thing I'd like to talk about...
That one you're in long.
Oh, sorry.
You can take ten seconds to wrap it up.
Is, is the actual revenue in reality, what revenue comes in. If you would take a look at that, I, I have that in here. A lot of states that legalize it, the amounts that they said that they were gonna bring in didn't come to fruition. Thank you.
Hi, everybody. My name's Tracy Valentine. I've lived in the Village of Wellsville my whole life, so I'm a lifer here. I'm like printing out facts that you can find on the internet, and I actually do live in Wellsville. I'm here to tell you about how it would be good for us, okay? So, I have smoked, I'm now, my whole life, for depression and anxiety. I have terrible anxiety right now. I should have smoked before I came. I would have used that, and I would have been a little funnier, and, you know, it would have went well. But, we could do this and make jobs for people and create more of a, I mean, Wellsville's really kind of sliding down the tubes right now, and I think this is just an important factor. So, please consider opting in. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name's Dan. I live in Centus Street in Wellsville, Dan Gray. I'm here on behalf of myself, medical marijuana users. I am a medical marijuana patient. I pay a lot of money for this license. The nearest dispensary is in Amherst to get it. It's very costly. I added enough to this meeting. From January to November 2nd, when I got my last shipment, I spent approximately forty-two hundred dollars, just in medical marijuana possible. Okay, I don't think it'll be illegal. I know everybody here's already set for opting out, and will opt in later. Hard to get from the crowd and everything. I'll bet you ninety dollars to a hundred dollars. Anybody? But anyways, what I'll bring up is, if you opt out, one of the things you're not considering are backstreet dealers in Wellsville. I know I did next to one. I can't get rid of them. They sell cars in and out all night long. I'd rather have a dispensary on Main Street that has cameras on it. No loitering, no use of it on premises. No way in hell, you take it home, and you go do whatever you gotta do, okay? Than have somebody dealing out in the street next door to me. Okay? I do use it, and I have used it. It's costly to use marijuana. Whether you opt out or opt in, it's still gonna come into the village, whether you do it illegally, like I do, or you do it next door. My name's Dan Gray, I live on Centus Street. And I'm a lifer.
Hi, everyone. I'm Angela Graves. I've lived in the Village of Wellsville since 2017. I've been asked to speak today. I'm actually a political scientist. Don't put your vampire stuff up yet. I promise, I'm a nice one. I have a doctorate from Syracuse University, and my interests are in law, policy, and democratic institutions. I taught all over the country, North Dakota, Idaho, and I taught at Kupa College for ten years before coming to Alfred State. My interests in this topic are, a few years ago, probably around the time I moved here, I became very interested in decriminalization and criminal justice reform. For a number of reasons, probably the biggest one being finding out that we spent a trillion dollars on the war of drugs between the nineteen seventies through the present day and had zero impact on drug usage. Why? Because criminalization doesn't work. But that's not why we're here tonight, and I actually wanted to applaud the board for not framing this as a conversation about the dangers of marijuana. That conversation has been had across the country. We are now one of eighteen states that has opened up for recreational marijuana use, plus the District of Columbia, and that conversation has been had time and time again. A twenty-first century conversation about cannabis places it with alcohol and tobacco. Not great for everyone, not great under a lot of different circumstances, but certainly not, you know, at the type of level of the time, type of drugs that are being dealt in dark corners. So, the main thing, though, that I wanna say tonight is about policymaking. I've been studying state and local government for many years now. I am now a member of the Town Board. I was back in the Town of Irwin on the zoning board before moving here. I try to learn and, and to find out more about how this works, not just in the classroom, but in the real life. It's my understanding, as others have framed, that the primary rationale behind opting to opt out now is that we'll revisit that later. And I just want to make sure that there is a clear process defined for that. If we are indeed, if you do indeed need more time to consider this matter, I would like to know what that process looks like. What kind of information would you like? What kind of information would make you be, "Oh, okay, here, we're ready to do it, it seems as if it's safe"? I've heard about a lot of concerns with New York regulations taking more time, but I just wanna make sure that we have a process in place. I would love to be involved, I think many people here would love to be involved in figuring out what that looks like for Wellsville, in order for everyone to feel comfortable. So, I could actually request for that timeline, an outline of that process, as well as a sunset date. When would you be willing to reconsider opting in? It's my fear that otherwise, this is really just a ruse for nimbism, not in my backyard. And as long as that is the case, there, marijuana is being sold every day in every community around the country. That's not gonna change here in Wellsville, whether we opt out or not. And in fact, opting out, as long as we do so, will create a black market zone, and it will hit up against the borders, as we see all of these economic opportunities unfold around us. Thank you.
My name is David Williams, and I have been a resident of Wellsville for the past forty years. And I am strongly opposed to the idea of distribution and consumption areas in our community. Obviously, marijuana is legal. We're not debating that it's legal, and I would not deny someone who has a legitimate medical need for marijuana, I would not deny them that, and I would hope they would be able to get the access that they want. My feeling as a person in the community and a teacher in a public school, I have seen the effects of marijuana on kids. I have seen the effects of marijuana in our community. And if you, all you have to do is go on the Substance Abuse and Mental Health Services Administration website of the US government. They tick off the problems with that. Is it happening in our community? Yes. But do we have to open the doors and welcome it and sanction it into our community? Because at the end of the day, our people, our families, and our kids are what's really important, and it's not worth paying that kind of a price for economic gain. To gain another dollar, to bow to the almighty dollar, so that, to give people greater access, when we know that studies like marijuana use to depression, anxiety, suicide planning, psychotic episodes, this is all listed on the government website. We know that it is. There are plenty of healthy ways to boost our economy that don't involve drug use. And even if we restrict it to, to adults, it's gonna, it's filtering down now. Why would we want to encourage it further? To me, it's, it's the same argument that people want to use to legalize things like prostitution. Well, it's happening anyway, so let's just make it legal. Drug abuse, well, let's just make it legal, and then they can shoot up in a safe place. That's encouraging a behavior that's damaging to people and damaging to our community. You can talk to the Wellsville Police Department, they've already told us they have a huge problem with drugs in our area. We don't need this, and at the end of the day, it's not a good bargain to trade that for our community, just to make our money. I think there's healthy ways to do that.
I'm Bill Mary, and I was born in the original Jones Smart Hospital, and my children died in the new world. So, here. And I got a lot of information, I can look it up on the internet, but I just got two reports. One from CNN, they're not exactly known as a conservative organization, but this is right, they sent a report to Colorado, which went first dates to legalize it. Now, they're not so happy about legalizing it there. And, of course, the young people, it's where it's so bad. The old people can buy it, and the young people are gonna get it. My thing about it is, okay, they're gonna get it, they're gonna make it as hard as possible, and we don't need to, to encourage that. Colorado expanded marijuana stores for medical users. Here we do, new research found the major factors in stolen, driving-relatedness. So, they take it, then we get some of them driving cars, but they shouldn't, but they do. Every major public health association, including the American Medical Association, American Academy of Child and Adolescent Psychiatry, and the American Society of Addiction, that's an opposed legalization of marijuana. Of course, New York State had to go and legalize it, but that's where we get punished for living in New York. One in six kids, whoever tried marijuana, will become addicted to the drug, according to the National Institute of Health and this is where it's found, the young people. Young people, their brains are developing, and now they sell it in Colorado, for example, in ice cream, and put it in brownies and stuff like that, and make it attractive, and, anyway. Heavy marijuana use in adolescents is connected to an eight-point reduction of IQ, labored Six times higher risk of schizophrenia for those that start when they're young. It's dangerous, it's no good, and I don't think we should encourage it by allowing it. So, especially not have places where they can smoke it. Of course, they're gonna get in the streets. A lot of teenagers, they're not gonna go in the streets and buy it. They'll keep it away for sickness. The sake of our kids is for nothing else. It's dangerous. Another report I haven't read, and he was from WebMD, which is a pretty reliable place, and they're saying the same thing. The effects, bloodshot eyes, dry mouth, decreased appetite, fast heart rate, slow coordination, trouble thinking and remembering. Very intimidating scans show heavy marijuana exposure at times for brain changes. I don't think we need that.
Hi, I'm Gary Barnes, fifty-three-year resident of the Town and Village of Wellsville, and also a county legislator here in Allegheny County. Counties are opted out or are not able to do, abode on this particular item, it's got cities, towns, and villages only. So, I'm here to talk against opting in at this time in the Village of Wellsville, and hopefully the Town of Wellsville also. But, there's, there should be no hurry to jump into this for, for either side. We need to set, set back, see what's, how this thing's gonna work, and then make a decision to opt in if so desired at a later date, which could be a year from now, or ten years from now, or whenever. The only thing is, if we opt in now, we can never get out. Not unless the state changes the law, and that's not gonna happen. So, I don't know all the facts and figures about the, the positive things for marijuana and all the negative things about marijuana. I do know that it's not a, a perfect solution to legalize marijuana, and I'm firmly opposed to it, and I would hope that the village and the town will think about it very, very seriously, and at least for now, opt out. Thank you.
Is there anyone else?
Okay, so, it's the first day that I've lived in a local area for twenty-five years. I just recently bought a house just outside of Wellsville, but I just wanted to say for a moment that a lot of the previous meetings, my name's Eric Brundage, our previous meeting that we attended a few weeks ago, and tonight, a lot of what I hear is fear, and reacting out here with no facts to back it up. And I just also heard a lot of, and you're not saying it now, but there was an undercurrent of not wanting a certain kind of people on Main Street or in the village, so here I am, Eric Brundage, hot smoker of twenty-plus years. I'm employed, I own two homes. My husband smokes. He works for the county, I work for New York State. We're doing really well in life. So, this thing that people believe that it's bad people that do bad things, I've never broke the law while smoking marijuana or eating it. And the other thing that I had to say, I didn't really prepare to say anything tonight, but I, I really just think it doesn't behoove us at all to pass up on this economic opportunity. Look around you. We are really struggling. We need the tax dollars. It's our responsibility to build a strong economy for our children, for ourselves, for the future. We have the highest tax rate in the whole damn country? Am I wrong? I'm pretty sure it was a couple years ago. I'm just saying, here I am, judge me if you want to, but responsible people use marijuana. And I would say that it's responsible people who have the money to purchase it most of the time. So, don't be afraid. Maybe just do a little research, not just on, you know, conservative websites, I'm not trying to be a hater, but do some real research. And I feel like that was another thing that, when I was at the last meeting, wasn't done, that everyone in the board admitted that they hadn't, had really done any research. So, I'm begging you, please, do a little research. I lost both of my parents to cancer, and I wish that their lives could have been extended just a little bit by the use of marijuana, to give them strength and nourishment, because their appetite would have increased, their attitude would have been better, they would have had so much less pain. And I just beg the people of Wellsville to just please, for once in your lives, be open-minded. That's all I can say.
Anyone else?
Hi. I'm Bob Garrison. I've been a resident of Bob, Wellsville since nineteen seventy-nine. I've had, I own a home, I've had jobs, I'm retired now, raise kids. And I assume like this is a no-burier, especially for the Republicans. This is where the money's at. This'll make me some money. Pro, marijuana provision costs money. Marijuana legalization brings in money. Worried about kids in school using marijuana. Yeah, it's true, but alcohol is here. Alcohol's been in this town, how many stores in Wellsville sell alcohol? And the, the same bad things you can say about marijuana are true with alcohol. They'll cause all kinds of problems, but alcohol's always been here. So, I think, I don't think there's people are gonna get any more globalized here. Whereas it is right now, marijuana is opted out in Wellsville, right? And it's still there. The same kind of people that will be here when you opt in are the ones that are already here. Why not, you know, do like the Republic, like one do, and make money out of it?
I'm his wife. Hi, I'm Carol Anne. I've lived here for forty-three of my fifty-three years. I was a forensic scientist for the New York State Police for five and a half of those years. So, I've seen this kind of from both sides. I just sort of like to emphasize a little bit of what Bob said, that alcohol, people die in this country every day from alcohol overdose. You can die from marijuana overdose. It does not happen, and yet we sell that in the village. So, I do understand wanting to wait until the state gets their act together and puts the regulations out for, you know, just exactly how they wanna do this. That I understand, but I really hope that the village, finally, when the state gets their act together, decides to opt into this, because if you don't, these dollars are gonna go to horn out, they're gonna go to Ollyam, they're gonna go to whatever other town or village is closest that has opted in, that is opening dispensaries, because people are gonna go by this wherever they can. I mean, this poor gentleman has to go to Amherst. That is ridiculous. He has a medical need, and he should be able to get that filled in his local community, just like we can go to the pharmacy and get our other prescriptions filled. So, I just, I hope that the village does eventually decide to do this, because I think it would benefit everybody. And like alcohol, there are some kids that are really gonna hold of it. But if you've got responsible parents, responsible store owners that aren't letting kids come in, that are underage, that are being responsible about it, I think it could be a win-win for everybody here. That's it.
I'm not done yet.
Oh.
On second thought. I first smoked marijuana in nineteen seventy-two, and I've never had a accident, I've never had any violations, I have no records, vehicle records or anything, come from marijuana. I've tried repeatedly since nineteen seventy-two to overdose. You can't overdose from marijuana. I, and can't become addicted. My financial situation isn't always really good. If I have the money and my bills are paid, I'll get some bill. But quite often, I don't have enough money, so instead of buying pot, I buy groceries. I don't go crazy. I wish I had some, something to smoke, but I do not go crazy. I don't jigger or nothing because of it. I just deal with it until next paycheck comes or something. I don't, I just don't see how this could go down today.
Anyone else?
I think my bidding would go to Ken Overdahl. No question about it.
My name is Ed McInerick. I'm an attorney in Wellsville. I own a business in Wellsville. I live at two eighteen East Dyke Street. My client, Andrew Harris, also owns property in the Village of Wellsville. We both pay a lot of property taxes. What I say is not just on behalf of Mr. Harris, but I, I believe the, the things that I'm about to say. I think that a lot of the claims that were made earlier have been disputed and refuted by peer review studies, and I've provided three hundred-plus pages to the elected leaders who will be making this decision. I provided it last night. They, I doubt that any of them, with the bills debacle, spent the evening reading three hundred pages of scientific studies, but I would like to point out to the trustees and his honor the mayor, some points, key points from two documents that were provided within those materials. The New York State twenty-eighteen Department of Health Study is an exhaustive study, and I, I... And I hear the naysayers out there, but it's the Department of Health for this state. And it starts at page one-twenty of that PDF. The conclusion is at page one-forty-seven of the PDF, and I'm gonna read part of it. "The positive effects of a regulated marijuana market in New York State outweigh the potential negative effects. Areas that may be a cause for concern can be mitigated with regulation and proper use of public education that is tailored to address key populations." "The positive effects outweigh the potential negative impacts," is what the New York State Department of Health states is its definitive conclusion. On page one-fifty-one of that PDF is a chart of the revenues from twenty-seventeen from the state of Colorado, which approximated about a hundred and twenty million that year. So I heard comments about how Colorado has had to change hard. I don't think those statements are accurate. The local government has the ability to do what they call a paca pito, although my colleague, Mr. Buck and I spoke in length this afternoon and debated about the true meaning of paca pito. It means that the MRTA, the Act, does not require you to take any action in order for the statute to take effect. And I'm reminded of lyrics that aren't Shakespeare, but some of you might recognize them. "If you choose not to decide, still have made a choice." There's no requirement that any trustee make a motion to vote on this. There's no requirement that any trustee second any motion to vote on this. A vote is not required pursuant to the statute. And at a minimum, I ask if the trustees and mayor are determined to have this vote, that at a minimum, you table it until the November twenty-second meeting, so that you have time to digest those three hundred pages and any other informational sources that some of the members of the public brought to you today. And I also think that it gives you the opportunity, Senator Borello, considering that I'm the last speaker, I would ask for an additional amount of time. We've been here for all thirty-four minutes. That Senator Borello has a bill pending in the Senate that would extend the opt-out period to December thirty-first of next year, giving this body an entire additional year to consider this law. It's in committee right now. Mr. Buck and I had spirited debate about whether it would pass or not. I don't know the answer to that, but I don't see the harm in waiting two weeks to take in more information, unless the lack of information that I've seen reported in the news is strictly based on the Cannabis Control Board's lack of regulations. And if that's the lack of information, I would like to hear that from the trustees and his honor. I mentioned Senator Borello. Last week, I went to a fundraiser for the senator, and it was at an establishment that sells intoxicants. Is that the Elica Ville Brewery company? I-86 had a detour, so we had to get off the highway, and we traveled on four-seventeen, and there were three dispensaries. And one I noticed in particular, and it was being operated out of a house. It didn't have adequate regulation. I think this route could promulgate substantially improved time, place, and manner provisions to control it, to zone it and regulate it with the opportunity to take the money that I've heard a few people talk about out of the illicit market, which would reduce the burden on enforcement, and put that into a legitimate market that you even have control of. If you vote to opt out, you are essentially allowing it to remain an illicit market, and it will stay underground. The second document that I really hope you'll look at is at page seventy-six of the PDF. It's only ten pages. It's published by the Cato Institute.
Twenty seconds.
It's at page seventy-six to eighty-six. That's a conservative think tank that values liberty, pro-business, low taxes, limited government, much like many of us here, and I imagine much like members of the panel here. And since I'm being told that I only have a few seconds left, this is the November twenty-one Farm Bureau news. I ask that I be permitted to enter a copy of that into the record, but I'd like to draw your attention to the newest member of the Cannabis Control Board, Jan Metzger, who was the Ag Committee Senate Chair. So she knows a lot about these issues, and she says the cannabis industry offers enormous opportunities for New York farmers, and it speaks to an issue of the distressed farmer. I imagine every person in this room knows at least one distressed farmer, in one way or another. We are an agricultural community at our core, countywide and in the village and the town. And I have a lot more to say, but I ask that I may be permitted to approach and provide this copy to the board.
Sure. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, your honor.
(Applause) (Music) 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 Thank you, everyone. Thank you especially to the speakers who spoke your mind and brought a lot of information forward to us. At this point, the hearing is ended. It will take five minutes, and then we will begin the village board meeting. Thank you.
(Music) 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 (Music)